Say, Michelle?
Yes, Commissioner Sarge.
Did you pretty much get everybody's approval for your idea?
I did not. I heard from five and six, including me, I believe. I imagine everyone will get a chance to check their email tonight.
Great. Looks like we're missing still a few commissioners here. Do we have anyone not going to be present tonight, Cindy Dino?
I don't know. Jim Fisher and Bill Anderson are not here, but I have not heard that they aren't gonna be here, so that I guess we'll know in a couple of minutes, but no, I did not hear from either one.
Looking good, Osbournes.
You guys say thanks?
Mr. Chief Executive, go ahead and you can start, and I'll let you know if either one of them shows up.
Okay, Commissioner Shaw, can we do roll call?
Thank you, JP, for regular meeting agenda Tuesday, March sixteenth.
Let me do that, I'm sorry. I'd like to call, I'd like to call order the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Can we get roll call, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, we have ten present and two absent at this time. Thank you.
Please note that Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Anderson are not present at this time. Yay. We'll start with the prayer. Commissioner Sarge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Fellow commissioners, Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community at Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Sarge. Okay, and next we'll move to the approval of the minutes. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I moved to approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second of approval of the March 1st, or March 3rd, 2021, regular meeting. Anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote?
We're working on the voting. There we go. Okay.
Anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
We have ten yays, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. Okay, next we'll move to items not addressed on the agenda. We do have one item for suspension of the rules. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We have a finding of existing emergency to permit suspension of the rules to allow Communication 2021-141 to be added to tonight's agenda. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow Communication 2021-141 to be added to the agenda of tonight's regular meeting of council. The reason for the suspension is as follows. Communication number 2021-141 is a communication from Deputy County Attorney Mike Clegg requesting that the council authorize the chief executive to sign a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the partners of the DUI court. This communication was not submitted by the deadline for the March 16th agenda as the MOU is not reviewed by all parties prior to that deadline. However, because the application is due by April 7th, 2021, and due to the fact that there will be not be another regular meeting of the council prior to this deadline, Mr. Clegg is requesting that this matter be added to the March 16th, 2021 council agenda. Based upon the foregoing and in order to allow this matter to be acted upon, the council hereby finds that an emergency exists which requires the suspension of the council's rules to add Communication 2021-141 to the agenda for the March 16th regular meeting. At this time, I move to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing Communication 2021-141 on the agenda at the March 16th, 2021, regular meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the suspension of the rules to move Communication number 2021-141 on the agenda for tonight. Anything on the question? Commissioners, could you please vote?
Oops, what happened? Just lost my... There we go.
And would anyone like to change their vote?
Heart attack.
And clerk, please record the vote.
We have ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Thank you.
And we will be adding that to the end of the agenda after the consent.
Correct. Okay. Next, we'll move on to the chief executives' report tonight. I'm pleased to report that the Health Department, we've hit our numbers for the past two weeks, that the metric has been met. So as of Friday, March 19th, at 8:00 a.m., we will open up to 75% capacity in all our businesses. We will keep the 12:30 p.m. closing time and also the group gatherings the same. If we can continue to have the same numbers going on till the 23rd, actually, that we will hit our third straight week of hitting the metric, and then we will fully open back up with no restrictions other than the mask mandate. The mask mandate will stay in place. And we, you know, through everything that we've gone through this year, I think it's quite a milestone and a credit to our businesses, our Health Department, everybody involved. I know that everybody has COVID fatigue right now. And everyone, you know, is looking forward to the time that we continue to move forward and we get to that herd immunity. And with that, we continue with the vaccination clinics. We're doing such a fantastic job down at the Civic Center. I'm so pleased with the coordination of everything that's going on throughout, you know, Butte and with everybody involved down there, and so we'll continue that tomorrow with a lot more vaccinations and we'll continue to move forward with that. And so just really good news for our community, and I'm so proud of everybody that has been involved with that and including the support of the commissioners for, you know, the restrictions that have been in place because it hasn't been easy, and I know there's been a lot of pressure on everybody to try to move the bar and the metric. Seeing that met is really a bonus for all of us. With that, I'm not going to take much more time, but just, you know, we're extremely busy. The, you know, the new relief package is going to be out. There's a lot of things that are going to come out of that, and we're going to put together a team that address the things that we can do, and hopefully there's some great projects and things that we can move forward with the relief package. I know that there's a lot of state funding and stuff like that, that it will be affected in water, sewer, and broadband projects that are out there, and we've got a lot of those. And I want to credit, you know, Public Works Department for having a lot of our master plans done, ready to go. So we have projects that we can submit, and we want to be first in line when they start allocating some of that money. And so we won't see most of that money for about 90 days, but we need to start preparing for that. And then also, next week sometime, we're probably going to do a public announcement as we are reopening and some of the things that we'd like to do as we move forward to help businesses and the community be successful as we reopen our community. So with that, I'll close the chief executives' report. Thanks for listening to me, and we will move on to public comment on anything or any items on the agenda tonight. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I don't have any letters to read near the record, but I would go to the phones, and if anybody cares to call in, they're welcome too at 497-5009. We'll give it a minute to see if we get any calls. This time, Chief Executive Gallagher, so I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Seeing that there's no public comment, we will move on to... Normally, we would go to Section 1, but we are going to skip to Section 3 today because we have an item, a communication to be read and acted upon. So we're going to move Section 3 in front of Section 1 tonight. So Section 3, communications to be read and acted upon. Communication number 2021-120, JP Gallagher, Chief Executive, requesting Council of Commissioners concurrence of my appointment of Mr. Zach Osborne from H Cedar Lake Drive, Bu, Montana, 59701, as Assistant Chief Fire Marshal. And I'm, I'll comment right now on this. I'm very pleased to have Zach Osborne coming on board as our Assistant Chief Fire and Fire Marshal. Zach has been, you know, he interviewed and was selected unanimously as we went forward with this position. He also interviewed for our Fire Chief position when Fire Chief Doughty was there. And Zach has set himself apart from the rest of the field with his leadership, his ability within the fire department, and he was just the right guy for the choice. He was unanimously picked to have this position. I'm extremely proud. I've known Zach for a number of years, and to his unfortunate part of many times, many people have asked him if he was my little brother. Evidently, we resemble each other a little bit, so he's been asked that a few times throughout life. But Zach's a heck of a Butte guy, and we're very proud that he's here. Once again, it shows the quality of applicants that we have within our own fire department to be able to move forward into these positions. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Fire Chief or Fire Director Brian Doughty and let him say a few words, and then we'll let Zach have a few words. Fire Chief Doughty.
Chief Executive Gallagher, members of the council, how you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
The Butte Silver Bow Fire Department is extremely excited to announce the appointment of Zach Osborne as our community's next Assistant Fire Chief and Fire Marshal. Chief Osborne is an excellent addition to our leadership team, and we're super confident that he's going to serve our community with integrity and respect. That's how he lives his life. Zach's going to bring a wealth of knowledge, experience, and energy to this position. He's going to have to bring a lot of energies because he's going to have to outwork my energy that I put into it, right, Zach? Zach's highly qualified. He brings strong leadership qualities, and he is deeply respected within our department. I'm confident in Chief Osborne will serve the city of Butte, the fire department, and our community well and above beyond what we all expect. With that, I'll give you Mr. Zach Osborne, our new chief, Assistant Chief, and Fire Marshal.
Fire Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal Osborne, you're welcome to address the transmission.
Chief Gallagher and members of the council, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for giving me this opportunity to say a few words. I've been very fortunate to work for the Butte Fire Department for the last 13 years. And although I'm very sad that I'm leaving my position as captain, I'll miss working alongside the crew every day. I'm excited to start a new chapter, working with my good friend and mentor, Brian Doughty, Chief Brian Doughty. Together, we will bring new, fresh ideas to our service. And I want to, I want to say thank you most of all to my family that I'm sitting here with tonight for continuing to deal with the stress that any fire position can bring. I also want to say thanks to all the past and present firefighters that I've had the opportunity to work with who have always had my back and continue to, will do the same. Another thank you to Chief Doughty for all the years of mentorship and friendship and welcoming me into this position. And also a big thanks to you guys, Chief Executive Gallagher and members of the council, for trusting me that I will do an exceptional job in this position. So with that, thanks again. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Fire Marshal Osborne, and congratulations on the new position. Would any commissioners like to say anything?
Congratulations.
Yeah. Commissioner Shay.
We still need to vote, for one. But I would like to just say to Mr. Osborne and Mr. Doughty that my experience with the fire department has always been a very positive one. I was lucky enough to be able to help facilitate the firefighter testing for a few years, and it was one of the very favorite professional activities that I've ever done. A finer group of professionals will not ever be found in this state outside of the Butte Fire Department. So with that, I will let anybody else speak.
Okay. Well, I'll move to the motion, and I'll have Commissioner Sarge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, and congratulations, Chief Assistant Chief Osborne. But anyways, I would like to make the motion to concur on Communication Number 2021-120 and place on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to concur and place Communication Number 2021-12 and place on file. Anything on the question? Commissioners, please vote. And would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, could you please record the vote?
Ten yay and zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Congratulations, Assistant Chief Fire Marshal Osborne.
Thank you, everybody.
Proud of you, Zach. Now, if you want, you can stay on and enjoy our commissioner meeting, or you can go enjoy time with your family.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right. Have a great night.
You too.
Moving on to Section 1, bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. We do have a bid opening, and so for Communication Number 2021-112, our Mark Neary Public Works Director requesting Council Commissioner authorized to schedule a bid opening for March 16th, 2021, for a backhoe for the Water Utility Division. County Attorney Joyce, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have proof of publication, and it does appear to be in order.
Okay, we have proof of publication. And do we have Director Neary available to do the bid opening?
Yes, thanks, Chief Executive Gallagher. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Mark Neary, Public Works Director. It looks like we have four bids turned in tonight. The first one is from Titan Machinery, Missoula, Montana. Searching for the hidden bid bond.
The elusive.
Always the funnest part.
I think they do it on purpose.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed charity company, and the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the grand total is $83,193.23. Eighty-three, one ninety-three, twenty-three cents.
Eighty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents.
And I will let the commission know that there is a trade-in on this. We have a 2018 case backhoe that we own right now that we're trading in. That's where the sum is where it's at. Our engineer's estimate would have been $160,000.
Thank you, Director Neary.
The second bid is also from Titan Machinery from Missoula, Montana. Not sure why we got two bids.
Bidding against themselves. Hopefully, it's lower.
Same time. It's interesting.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed charity company that appears to be in order.
Thanks, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the grand total on this one is $91,338.88. Ninety-one, three thirty-eight, eighty-eight.
Ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
The next one is from Western States in Missoula.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed charity company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the grand total price is $78,605. Seventy-eight, six oh five.
Seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
And so Titan Machinery would be a case backhoe. Western States would be a cat backhoe. Our final bid is from Ardio Equipment Embolism. This would be a John Deere.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed charity company that appears to be in order.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce.
Chief Executive Gallagher, the grand total on this one is sixty-nine thousand, five hundred even. Sixty-nine thousand, five hundred.
Sixty-nine thousand, five hundred. Okay, Commissioner, so that is all our bids?
Yep.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Shaw, oh, sorry, Commissioner Sarge has hand up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Neary, what did you spec for? So you've got bids on three different backhoes. What kind of ways did you put out the bid for or spec on to let them know?
I mean, we put out, it's a new 2021 seventeen thousand pound backhoe. I mean, if you want to know all the specs, I think it's four or five pages.
Oh, no, no, I just kind of, I'm just kind of wondering, you know, why there's three different flavors that you are looking at. I just wondered if you might have said you wanted a case or if you wanted a...
No.
Okay.
No, we just, we just put, we just publicize it, and whoever wants to bid it can bid it.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to refer all of the four bids that we received on this communication back to Public Works to come back to this body with their recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to refer back to Public Works. Anything on the question? Could commissioners please vote? Anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yay and zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to the next section, Section 2, Consent Agenda. Committee reports, A 1 through 4 and B 1 through 20. Do we have any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate item number 11, which is 2021-131.
Item number 11, 20, or 2021-131. Any other segregations? Okay, so... I will, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve Section 2, Consent Agenda. Item A 1 through 4 and B 1 through 20, with the exception of item 11, 2021-131.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, approving consent agenda. Anything on, except for item number 11, Communication Number 2021-131. Anything on the question? Would commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, will you please record the vote?
It appears we're missing, we're missing one vote.
Okay.
See if we can't identify who that might be. Justin? Thumbs up, Justin? Okay, we have ten yay, zero nay. Thank you.
Ten yay, zero nay, motion passes. Moving on to Communication, segregated communication, Number 2021-31, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This is Ed Lester, Butte Silver Bow Sheriff, requesting Council of Commissioners concurrence and authorization for the chief executive to sign the MOU, or Memorandum of Understanding, between Butte Silver Bow and the Southwest Montana Drug Task Force. Sheriff Lester called me today, and he said that there was something about the MOU that he was not clear on. He wanted to wait. He did not want to make that decision tonight. So he asked if I would kindly move this to our committee, the whole, for further discussion on his part with the other side of the Southwest Montana Drug Task Force MOU. with the other side of the Southwest Montana Drug Task Force MOU. So if there's not any questions about that, I would move to change my recommendation to move communication twenty twenty-one dash one three one to the committee of the whole.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to move communication number twenty twenty-one dash one three one to committee of the whole. Is there anything on the question? Would commissioners please vote? And would anyone like to change their vote?
We have ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to our suspension of the rules. We had a communication number twenty, our twenty twenty-one dash one four one. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I did read the reasoning behind this, but I do see Mike Clegg is on the, on our meeting tonight, and I was just going to refer to Mike if he doesn't mind giving us a quick rendition on this. It doesn't have to be anything too long, but I would like to give Mike the floor if he would do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Dippie County Attorney Clegg.
Chief Executive, commissioners, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. This memorandum of understanding is an agreement amongst the partners of the Butte Silver Bow DUI Court. This memorandum was first signed ten years ago, and now we are applying for a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. And a memorandum of understanding is required to be re-signed. And this agreement would have the partners of the Butte Silver Bow DUI Court continue to work together for the furtherment of the established court and include the enhancements of the program. We are enhanced, we are trying to enhance the program with more services to participants and offenders that are directly related to COVID. And we're trying to expand some of the treatment options to go into telehealth and telemedicine and more of a video or electronic-based services.
Thank you, Dippie County Attorney Clegg. Do we have any other discussion or we'd like to make a motion? Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this, thank you, Mike, for that explanation, and it's a wonderful program. I can't wait to see it getting started. So at this time, I would move to concur with communication twenty twenty-one dash one forty-one and place it on file.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to place communication number twenty twenty-one dash one four one to concur and place on file. Anything on the question? Commissioners, could you please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
We have ten yay and zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to section four, ordinance and resolutions introduced to judiciary. We have two council bill number twenty twenty-one dash zero two and council bill number twenty twenty-one dash zeros three. Please note that these will be placed on judiciary. Moving on to section five, ordinance and resolutions for final reading. Number one, council bill number twenty twenty-one. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Council Bill number twenty twenty-one dash zero one, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one, and ordinance amending chapter two point five six of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code entitled Public Archives, specifically amending sections two point five six, point zero one zero, two point five six, point zero one one, point one zero zero, two point five six, point one one zero, two point five six, point one three zero, and two point five six, point one six zero, and adding sections two point five six, point zero eight zero, and providing for effective date herein. And at this time, I would move to place council bill number twenty twenty-one dash zero one, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero one on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion and a second to move council bill number twenty twenty-one dash zero one on final reading. Any ques, anyone, anything on the question? Would commissioners please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, would you please record the vote?
Ten yay and zero nay.
Ten say, ten yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Moving on to section six, ordinance and resolution suspension of the rules final passage. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten by waving, and twenty twenty-one dash eleven, two them together, by waiving subsection seven of rule thirty-six of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having them considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for final passage on second resolution. Is there anything on the question? Commissioners, could you please vote?
We're getting there. There we go.
And would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
We have ten yay and zero nay.
Moving on to number two, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one one. Commissioner Shaw.
Well, we'll go back to twenty twenty-one. The first one, okay.
Yeah, we got, we got to go and do another motion. That's right.
That's okay. You're doing, you're doing fine, JP.
Commissioner Shaw.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for Federal Land Access Program, FLAP, funding with the Federal Highway Administration of the United States Department of Transportation to finance improvements for molten road improvements. And at this time, I move to place Council Resolution twenty twenty-one dash ten on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one zero on final reading. Anything on the question? We have commissioners, please vote. Would anyone like to change their vote? Clerk, please record the vote.
We have ten yay and zero nay.
Moving on to number two, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one one. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to, this is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for Federal Land Access Program, FLAP, funding with the Federal Highway Administration of the United States Department of Transportation to finance improvements for Roosevelt Drive improvements. At this time, I move to place Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. We have a motion and a second for resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one one on final reading. Anything on the question? Commissioners, would you please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? And clerk, please record the vote.
We have ten yay, zero nay.
Ten yay, zero nay. Motion passes. Now, we now move on to public comment on any public matter not on the agenda. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I do have one letter to read into the record, but I'll see if there's any phone calls. I'll do that. The letter I have to read in the record today is from Fred and Melissa Hill, nineteen oh one Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana. With all the increased traffic on Texas and Grand Avenue, something needs to be done to improve safety. With the closure of the Civic Center Road for the next two years and the increased traffic, I feel we need to make drivers more aware of the four-way stop. I live on the corner of Grand and Texas, and I see drivers who do not stop at all, or they roll through, or they roll through the stop signs. We are right next to Clark's Park, and it's a hazard for people trying to use the crosswalks. I would like to see small solar panels with lights around the edges of the stop signs put up to help alert and slow drivers down. We have all the traffic from East Junior High in the mornings and afternoons, and now all the increased traffic from the detour. Flashing lights or anything else that could be installed would help to lessen the chance of accidents. Please take this into consideration, and I would like a response back. Thank you, Fred and Melissa Hill, nineteen oh one Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana. And that concludes the letter to be read in the record, and I don't see any phone calls. Mr. Chief Executive.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Please, we have next on the agenda is calendar and other meeting and events. Take note of the dates and times of the, of the different meetings and events. And then this concludes the means, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor? Yeah?
I.
Motion passes. Have a great night. Thanks for a nice, quick meeting tonight.
And happy St. Patrick's Day. Be safe out here. Good night.